Okay, I think we're still waiting for one more that I see. I think we're waiting for Jason. You on there or do I not see you? All right, we're still waiting for Jason to get a couple of minutes. All right, I just got a text from him. He'll have to join us in a few minutes finishing up something here. So we can start this Barbie. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Your work session, virtual meeting, January 12th, 2021. Barbie, if you can go and do what you need to do.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe everyone is accustomed to how these meetings operate, so I'll jump to the roll call. Please indicate if you are present. Mayor Ron Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pretend Brenda McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Jason Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Ann Simpson.
Present.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Tracy Westlook.
Present.
And Commissioner Pedro Norae.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present.
Very good. We can do this informally. Welcome, everybody. Good to see all your faces up here on the screen again. With that, we're all set and ready to go, so I'm just going to let the town manager and have his. He can start up right now. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, everybody. Good to see everybody on screen as well. And so we are continuing on in our review of our land development code. And where we'll start today is Chapter Nine, which is the Environmental Regulations Section. And as you see online here, we have our engineering department that will take the heavy lifting of walking you through this chapter. And I will cede the floor over to our town engineer, Matt Hubert, who will share that chapter and walk through it with you. Matt?
Hey, Jeff. Good afternoon, Mayor and Board. Good to see y'all again. I'll kind of just jump right into it. Basically, the overview here is we've had. These ordinances were all kind of housed separately, with the exception of the flood development. Flood Protection Ordinance was in the preview, the current U D O. But, you know, Jeff and I felt it was better to maybe consolidate all of that language in one way or another. So that there's one stop to get most of the legal background in the L D C. Rather than have these other documents out there that make it more difficult for developers or really our own staff to be able to track down how we are running these particular items. And so the environmental regulations, they comprise our stormwater code, our erosion control ordinance code, and finally, the floodplain management code. For those pieces, again, they're all existing in their current forms. And some of them, we've consolidated what the most legally binding components of each of those ordinances are to put in the L D C going forward. And there are minor tweaks, nothing really of a. I'd say a controversial nature is changing, maybe some reorganization just for simplicity. But most of this is really verbatim, just taken from our current ordinance and moved over into the L D C and then reformatted with the new structures in terms of titles and sections to be consistent with the rest of the document. So Section 9.1 is related directly to our post-construction stormwater requirements. And so it initiates what exactly that means and how we interact with the state's requirements. So the town itself has a. When we talk post-construction, we're talking about new development or redevelopment of land that changes the amount of impervious surface from what's referred to as pre-construction, which is its natural state typically, or not currently redeveloped state. And then what the plan is and the changes in impervious and how we anticipate that impact to be mitigated.
Hey, Matt.
Sir.
Don't forget to share your screen.
Yep, okay. That's a good point.
Is that the right word?
Yeah. Okay, so are we seeing Chapter Nine?
Yes.
So back to post-construction, we do require that if you were developing more than 20,000 square feet of impervious, and that's detailed in 913. If you're creating more than 20,000 square feet of impervious cover with your development redevelopment, then you are required to submit a drainage plan, and that plan must include management practices that ensure that you are not increasing the rate of runoff from your property off-site. Basically, if you're not putting a burden on your downstream neighbor in your development. And so this is, this is nothing new. It's basically our ordinance back in the late 90s, early 2000s was pretty much cut and pasted from Charlotte's. I think really all they did was do a find and replace of City of Charlotte, Macinber County, and put Waxaw in as the first iteration. And since then, we've continued to tweak it to make it a little bit more Waxaw-specific. I think previously, we brought the ordinance itself forward to the board for adoption. And that's the design piece of it to eliminate some of the really outdated calculation sections and some of the old references that didn't really apply as the state of the art or state of the practice has developed since the 2000s to now. But we do, in plans submitted, we do our own review and require that they detain water. And there's a difference between detain and water quality. So we're talking about making sure that the flow stays on-site so that the pre-development rate of runoff is maintained in post-development. So basically, it's either a pond or a subsurface storage that holds that water and doesn't release it until two to five days after. So that during your event, all that runoff that you've created across new impervious area doesn't directly go downstream into the system and create flooding and erosive impacts to existing property downstream. We partner with the state in that they require and govern water quality aspects. So for sites, and typically, if you're doing one, you're typically doing the other. They usually go hand in hand, but that's where the detention pond gets a vegetated feature typically. If you're talking about a constructed wetland where you're planting around the pond and in the pond so that the water has a means to be filtered through natural means and mechanical means in terms of sitting in the pond long enough for any pollutants to then settle to the bottom. And then cleaner water rises to the top and goes to the overflow structure and then goes downstream in accordance with state design standards. So that's kind of the background of our post-construction stormwater. And that's really a partnership between the town and the state. We review them, but they have to get a separate state permit to ensure that they are meeting the state's water quality requirements. And so no C E Os, no plan approvals will be released by the town until we are assured that they've met those other environmental guidelines. And I want to be clear that outside of our post-construction, we really do not have a stormwater program. Currently, we only maintain storm drainage facilities within the towns except at public right-of-way. We do not go off-site onto private property and do anything. We simply are not funded for that. Typically, that happens when we are brought into the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. You may have heard it referred to M P D E S. Phase Two is for urbanizing areas, which clearly Waxaw is. We do expect to be brought into that program, and what that will require is our own management of stormwater across our town limits. And so that's something we've been key to keep in front of us, but as yet, we're not seeing that likely to happen. EPA to declare us in that program until probably 2025. So we've still got some time to move in that direction and set up our program. And that will most certainly incur a fee based on, you know, there's usually an equivalent residential rate and then some sort of commercial rate based on the size of the commercial development. All that's pretty standard now, so we don't have to really invent the wheel. It's more or less just knowing when they plan to do it and then deciding exactly whose model to follow. And that's pretty standard. So as we continue through. Talk about what exactly is required for plan approval. The design manual is really the technical piece that talks about exactly how you do the calculations, how you submit your calculations, and what you do for your plans to show the proper design practices that we'd be expecting and the types of B M Ps that we allow. And B M P is a best management practice. Basically, it's either a wet pond, a constructed wetland, or some sort of underground storage. Which sounds kind of. When we talk about underground storage, it's typically very little used. But in small constrained sites, we do actually have some. Ardmore is an example where we do have underground detention for that site. And so it's not that uncommon now. I think we'll see more and more of that as our property values increase and the size of these structures, they can't be kind of managed on-site. They need to be put below the development. And so that's just kind of a transition I think we'll continue to see. Again, more reference to more the chapters themselves within the design manual in the technical side. Standard language in terms of how this law interacts with other laws that might be similar or overlapping. Again, the administration, what you have to submit to the town for permitting, what you have to submit to the state. Now here's, in 919, we talk about the standards. And one thing that everybody should be clear while we're here is to understand that the town doesn't define what the waters of the state, i.e. those waters that are regulated. The Division of Water Resources from the state does that and in conjunction with the Army Corps of Engineers. So if someone's thinking about, oh, this pond is here, is that regulated? Am I allowed to build on it? Or do I have to keep that for whatever reason? The town wouldn't make that determination. We would defer to the state and the Army Corps to make that determination. Same thing with our surface waters in terms of streams, channels. Typically, if it's always wet, you can be sure it's regulated. If it's just for rainfall, it's a wet weather ditch, then that's kind of a gray area. And we would always defer to the regulatory agencies, regulatory agencies to make that determination. So specifically, when we talk about a B M P, those are structures that are required as part of the site. And they, we know we're downstream, we're gonna be. When we talk about future phase-two requirements, we're gonna be enforcing more of that in the future. But right now, the standard is that somebody has to be shown as the legal entity who would own and operate and maintain in terms of who we would follow up with should there be any issues with a B M P on the site. And so that's referred to in Section 91-11. So that's really the high points of our stormwater ordinance as we've kind of put it. Separated the legalese into the L D C, and then the rest of the technical side remains in the design manual. Orion is tapped to be kind of our stormwater administrator. He does plan reviews and he's strong in the stormwater side. So as we continue to move our program forward, we're also making sure that he stays abreast of current and future happening so that he can be the one-stop shop for all things stormwater. And at this point, we get to the next section, so I'll stop here and ask if there are any questions pertaining to the stormwater ordinance in the L D C. Okay, hearing none?
Hold on, I just had a quick question. How big do we see this getting in the near future?
Do we see the size of the regulations or the extent of the program?
Well, both. And I guess our response to it is.
Okay. I think the groundwork is all really here. It will get much more complicated and much more comprehensive when we are brought into the phase-two program because that makes us responsible for really anything that. When we talk about pollutant discharge, we're talking about any open pipes that are going to take water and transmit it somewhere else. So everything that happens upstream and then downstream, we are basically telling the state, hey, we are paying attention to what's occurring and doing it in a way that we're ensuring further pollution is not happening through our system. And so contamination has to be closely monitored, industrial uses, the way people maintain. We will then start to really have to have boots on the ground to a much larger degree. Right now, you know, we're just doing plan review. We're looking at these ponds. And then Todd and his crew are out in the field dealing with our cross drains and our inlets in the public street system. But everything beyond those boundaries is really private property or commercial property owner. It's their responsibility. So that will change somewhat dramatically. And to account that, to offset all the changes, that's why the fee will be required because we're gonna have to up-staff and change our regulations pretty substantially to meet those requirements.
Matt, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I would update about a few weeks ago, I took that webinar on the finance part of the stormwater maintenance. And there was a lot of discussion in there about the town not being able to go in onto private property despite having a program. So that's gonna be an issue that we'll have to consider when we get to there and we start taking a fee, our ability to go on a private property. Because if we go on one private property and we say, no, we don't need to go on that private property, you have an issue there. And people start seeing favoritism and it becomes a problem.
Okay, and so that's right. So that's.
A lot of municipalities do not go on private property at all.
Okay, that's, and again, just some of the hurdles we'll have to go through. I would expect that this should have come up with existing programs. So I'm not sure why they would have this come up as an issue now because so many localities within the state are already doing this.
Right, and that was a huge thing because Charlotte, that's why they created their program. So they were very surprised on the call when they were saying, you're not really supposed to be doing that. So they're like, well, that's why we do it. So it's a very interesting situation.
So this is a new development. Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know. Far be it that it should be that easy. We'll just have to take that as it comes. But Pedro, did that address your question?
It did, thank you.
Okay. Any more on stormwater? Okay. So then Section 9.2 is where we've just pretty much taken our sedimentation erosion control ordinance and dropped it in its entirety. We were, back in 2016, we were through the state, we were approved to have our own program. We have an agreement with the state that we would take over erosion control, sedimentation control from them. And that was something that was very, very, our previous board was very interested in doing because with all the residential construction and development, I don't think at the time they were getting a lot of satisfaction from the state's level of oversight and enforcement. And so I think we were keen to have our own local program that we could administer and be sure that we were doing it to the standard of care that we expected to have for ourselves and our residents. So basically, all that meant was we started with their model ordinance. We basically copied all of it. You can't be any less restrictive than the state's ordinance, but you can be more restrictive. And we did take that ability, and we did go beyond the state's minimum standards to, one, control lower levels of disturbed areas and to include single-family residential in our erosion control program. So again, the bulk of this is really word-for-word from the state. But there are some pieces as we go a little deeper into where the town kind of went a little deeper and got more specific in what we wanted to see. And I think over the years, we've seen that work out well for our intent. Again, we have the qualifying language in the beginning. Standard exclusions, agricultural practices are not controlled by this mechanism whatsoever. Mining, same kind of thing. So here, 925 is really the heart of what the town brought forward. And that's that we went below the state's one-acre threshold, and we brought it down to 12,000 square feet of disturbed area is where we require a plan be completed and submitted for our approval. That is really when we talk about a commercial use because it goes here in the second sentence of plan required. It says, "Single-family lots less than an acre." They don't have to have a plan per se, but they do have to sign an operations and maintenance agreement. And basically what that says, we have a really simplified form out front at our permit office that says you have a standard lot that you're gonna build a house on. Every lot is required to have a rock temporary driveway so that construction traffic, when they're coming on and off the property onto a public street, that rock is there to clean all the mud off your equipment and keep it from tracking onto the streets. So every single-family lot has to have that temporary construction entrance. They also have to have silt fence on any of the upstream areas to capture any runoff and keep the sediment on their site and not from washing downstream onto a neighbor's property. And so that's a pretty simple form, and that's our means of not having them have to spend a lot of money and take a lot of time and effort in submitting a plan and review. But just, here's the minimum things we expect you to do. And Chris is our man in field, Chris Rice. He goes out at the time of permit approval, before they can do any vertical, he goes out and confirms that those temporary construction entrances are in, the silt fences are in, before they can move to the next step of working on any foundation. And then he'll do, after rain falls, he'll go out and look at all the active sites and ensure that they're in good working order and then provide any maintenance expectations back to the builders. If silt fence is down, oftentimes they'll run over it because it's in the way of moving materials in and off the site. And what does it say? Look, you gotta put it back before it rains. And oftentimes, they take a little bit of liberty in tracking in the streets and he'll have to go back and say, look, you're gonna have to wash that off. Certainly, when we're talking about the clay in the area, when that gets on pavement, it gets pretty slippery when it's wet. So we are very jolly on the spot, if you will, to ensure that we're not creating unsafe conditions. They have a right to build, but they've got to do it in a responsible way. And I think we're doing a really good job of staying on top of that. And some, you know, some new builders might not be aware of how. And and some, you know, some new builders might not be aware of of how much attention we pay, but they they learn pretty early on that they need to pay attention to it, or we're gonna be out there having a look at it and and recommending them and and enforcing where need be. I think we have find people often, and one time we find them the maximum extent by the law, which is $5,000 for a repeat defense. That money doesn't stay with the town, it goes to the state. And in that instance, we called the state and asked them where to send, and they said, we don't know, it's never happened before. So that's, I think, the kind of level of of care we're taking in our program that that maybe the state and and other localities are not necessarily doing, but we are, we are very dedicated to ensuring that this, knowing we've got so much growth, we're not suffering in terms of the environment and 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 neighbors having to put up with with too much that that shouldn't be, you know, expected just because we're growing so fast. So again, with 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 that said, these are the general objectives laid out. Again, for health, safety and welfare of of everybody and to keep, we we want to keep the what's on site on that site. We don't want it to get into the streams and we don't want to get on other people's property. And so these controls and plans are are our means of doing that. So two, nine two six is our mandatory standards. We do require buffers around streams and and typically on on lot lines. Slopes and fills, if they're too steep, they need additional measurements taken to keep keep those slopes from eroding. Again, talks about the permit requirements and the 12,000 square feet. Then nine two seven are our performance standards. These these start to get pretty technical, but they are, they're all from the state model. Outlet protection, again, when you're putting in a storm drain, you're concentrating water that that creates a an erosive mechanism. And so we've got to ensure that there's riprap at the outlet and sometimes stabilizing fabric under your seed or along with your sod to ensure that, you know, if you're trying to grow grass and on a new site, sometimes it needs a little help and and we've got to make sure that what new water coming across it doesn't just wash it all away. There are requirements for when you're 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 taking dirt off site or you're bringing it on from other sites, those sites where you're getting it and where you're taking it are part of your plan and they, the developer or the construction contractor has to also ensure that those sites are properly maintained as part of the erosion control plan. And that's might be something that nobody necessarily thinks about, but it's it's a it's a good point. So you're not just digging a hole out somewhere and leaving it like that in order to get your your good fill material. And we talked about responsibility for maintenance. Typically, the applications require a the developer name a financially responsible person so that we know exactly who to send any of our inspection reports, enforcement letters, and if a violation or a fine is levied, where who's the legal entity responsible for that? Technical. A little bit more detail on the permits themselves. Again, this kind of follows what I previously said. This talks about the plan itself and how you how we administer to that. Just more my state model statutory requirements that that are part of the ordinance. Then, of course, because there are a lot of legal and property right conditions, there is a lot of language to what happens if there's a transition in the middle of a project. And that speaks to this transfer of plan section, somebody, it has to stay until we close out a permit that that it's still an active site. And so if 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 a project begins and then it stopped and it changes, that that permit is still active and and we need to be able to continue to inspect and enforce to that. And talks about we do, we are given the right by the state to go on a site, even if it's private property. If the if the if an open plan is in in place so that we can properly inspect and ensure they're doing things in accordance with the plan. Here's some of the penalty language, we do have the ability to to stop work. Again, that is not a preferred method, it it gets into the the legal notification requirements, they do typically, if we identify a violation, typically you have seven days of of a corrective period to remedy that. But if that's not done, or if it's a, if it's an emergency, say there's a something, a big storm event coming and there's something so egregiously done on the site, we may have to issue a stop work order and and make sure that they put all their attention on addressing this condition. And sometimes if a pond, a sediment basin is is not functioning and sometimes what that means is it's it's just letting water release on ungoverned. Those kinds of conditions, we're very aware of the impact that it can have to downstream. And so we we have to be very take it to another level of concern in terms of, we can't just sit back and give them seven days if this can lead to to imminent, you know, downstream property damage. So there is an ability to appeal that has actually occurred and and been we've been upheld on our on our side of things. Again, we're we're pretty performance based. There there's no more than one way typically to address these things. And and we understand, we don't want to interrupt or adversely impact a a developer or a builders operations, but we do expect that the intent of of this ordinance is 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 met. And so if they can show in another way how they're gonna do that, we don't necessarily have to control it, but we do have to be confident that there's they're hearing what we say and they're doing what we intend to be done to ensure that, again, nothing's getting off that site. That that should be controlled by the approved plan. And oftentimes, what's put on the plan doesn't work in the field and practice. And that's where we have to be a little bit flexible and and work with them. And and I think we have a good relationship with everyone who's doing work in town because they see we're not just out there to crack the whip because we can. We're we're doing it for for the the purpose of of the entire ordinance. And if they're if they're showing they're working to that end, then then we can kind of in good faith, I'll I'll be confident we're gonna end up at the right spot at the end of the day. Again, more legalese that comes from the model. Talk about when a plan is is not approved. And that's the the erosion control ordinance in its entirety. Additionally, we do have, because this is linked to to fees, the fee schedule related to the plan review and the and the fines as well as the permitting fees and even the erosion control, I mean, the the residential permit. That all had to get sent to the state and approved before we could enact it. And and that was, that's done. And anytime we we updated or make changes, that has to be approved as well. With that, are there any questions with the erosion control ordinance? All right, is everybody still awake?
That's a lot to digest, but we're all still awake.
Yeah, no, it's it's a pretty dry stuff. There's a, there's no doubt about it. But important nevertheless, absolutely.
So that the final exception, I'm sorry. Exception, this plant, with little exception, this plan is already in play. So we're just making adjustments as we come forward here. And yes, probably in a few more years, maybe five years or so, we'll be looking at a more active role in stormwater management. Be mandated.
Right. Yeah, you know, in in my opinion, it should have already happened because typically, once your population exceeds 15,000, that's when that's when they come 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 knocking on your door. But I think the EPA is kind of taking a a different tack this this administration. And and so that's not been really pushed at the federal level and the state level, they're they're doing what they can just to just to stay afloat. So they're not really going out and 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 kind of progressing this. But I do expect when the census comes back and then they they kind of catch up, that that we'll see that mandate come through. So the final portion of the environmental chapter is our flood damage prevention ordinance. Again, kind of following from these previous ordinances, this is enacted at the state level. And how FEMA and and the federal government make this program work is they require the localities to have all the administrative roles and responsibilities so that it eases the burden on on them. And how they do that is they say, if you guys want to be a part of the federal flood insurance program or the national flood insurance program, the NFIP, and that is have flood insurance available to our residents, we have to have this ordinance and meet its minimum requirements in doing so. And so it's kind of a, they've got a carrot dangling and and typically, that's why everybody would have a program unless you're very small and you don't have any flood plain or or very little flood plain in in areas that you would foresee development. That's the only time you might not have a flood prevention ordinance. So again, it is, there's a model ordinance from the state and and we took ours directly from that when it when it was when we started to become part of the program a long time ago. And and each time they changed the ordinance, we just simply update to the new model language. So the things that that they require, I mean, again, the the ordinance itself is is a necessity. And when we talk about the amount of of development going on, we're very fortunate that this has been in place. Charlotte, clearly, you know, they did a lot of 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 things before the their ordinance really caught up with them. And so they have significant areas of flooding where they did so much urbanization so long ago that now they've created a problem with with their development. They've tipped over into a side where they've created so much impermeable that this water all goes downstream and then backs up in areas that were already developed when they didn't realize, hey, maybe we shouldn't have built here. And so if we talk about Sugar Creek, they're buying out old apartment buildings and tearing them down to take them out of the floodway. They're building a lot of flood control structures so that the development that that's adjacent to them doesn't suffer from from the impacts of of the intense storms. And 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 Waxaw fortunately has not really done a lot of development along and in the flood plain where we have problems to mitigate. It just becomes a a process of ensuring that when when a property comes in for for a development and it's it's in the flood plain, we make sure that they follow the guidelines and and that generally is 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 working well because the model is so accurate and the process is so well defined. So there are very few cases, I'm not aware of anybody since I've been here, having any damage to their property, and that is structural and certainly no safety issues from from flooding that we've had. And there have been quite a few flood events. So that's that's a good sign that this is working as it's supposed to. But in general, what what the purpose of the ordinance is, is to make sure that development is done in 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 such a way as to not create a hazard to the 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 public in terms of of life and property. Because flood floods are the most expensive disasters that we have because water touches everything. And and typically, when it does, it 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 destroys it. You can't withstand a a lot of water very long or or very often. The requirement of that is that the town has a certified flood plain manager, that's me. Every you have to have that. If you're having an ordinance, you have to have a manager because that's the the technical person that is able to look at the the permits and make sure they're meeting the letter of the ordinance. There are also, as we get deeper into it, a whole list of of requirements. Let me get deeper into to the ordinance itself. But again, the purpose is to promote the public health, safety and general welfare from losses due to flood conditions. And the the ordinance itself is not, it just sets standards, higher standards for development. Whenever we're talking about working in areas adjacent to the to the flood plain. In that way, by making the the standards higher, you still have the ability to use your property, but it's so that way it's not an illegal taking. And that's something that has to be very clear. If you're in a flood plain, you you still own the property, you still have the rights to use your property. But when you talk about wanting to do something in that area, you have to meet additional standards. And those those range from not really restrictive, and when we're talking about the flood plain to very restrictive when we're talking about the floodway. And and I'll get into a little bit more detail exactly what that means. So there are the general provisions. And when we talk, one of the key definitions here is the special flood hazard area. That's the FSHA. When we look at a flood plain, you know, if we talk about 12 Mile Creek, there's that area that's always got water in it. And that's typically the floodway. We know there's always gonna be water there, even in a in a large storm, that area is gonna have water. And so if if you think you want to do anything in that area, you've got to take the most restrictive precautions. The i- in area that's always expected to have water is called a non encroachment area. And you you're not allowed to do anything in there whatsoever because it's it's set aside, it's already kind of set aside by nature to always have water in it. If you want to do something, if for so, if there's such a reason you want to do something so bad, then you have to mitigate, create a different area where that water can go. If you want to put something where the water already is and that, you know, we're we're not gonna see, that's usually typically if you're working on the coastlines or or you're you're you have an industry that needs to be on the water and and is utilizing that as a as a part of their operations. Those those permits are very hard to get, they're very expensive and they take a long time, and that goes directly to FEMA. So you have that center area is your floodway. Then outside of that area is is what's called an AE zone, that's old old nomenclature, but that's that's the flood plain. That's an area where the models have shown if it rains hard enough, and and we use the hundred year storm or the 1% annual chance storm as the the definition of the area that we know by modeling is gonna be inundated, it's gonna be covered with water when it rains that hard. And so you shouldn't plan to put any dwelling there, you certainly don't want to be living there. And if you want to put something there, you're allowed to put parking lots, you're allowed to. And if you want to put something there, you're allowed to put parking lots, you're allowed to put things at grade. If you want to put a structure there, that structure has to meet exceptional standards in terms of it has to be flood resistant. It has to be anchored to prevent flotation because you can assume that at some point one to three feet of water is going to be in that area. And so if, if your structure isn't able to withstand that, then you're not going to have permission to do it. So it talks about here LoMars, which are letter of map provisions. Anytime you make a, a change or you propose a development that is expected to impact these defined floodways and floodplains, you have to do a study that models the impact, send it to FEMA and they will review it and decide if you're, you're not going to have enough impact that they will allow it or you also, you, you have to actually do the modeling to help them redraw the map to show what the changes are. Going forward, it's kind of keeps the system up to date. And that happens, I think some of the subdivisions that that's occurred for are Millbridge toward out by Nesbit, they did a LoMar. Prescott right adjacent to the creek had a LoMar and then Lawson. There's a portion of, of that subdivision that had a LoMar done because they wanted to be able to make their building pads buildable and to do that, they had to move, fill and cut in other places to, to modify the floodplain, but that all had to go through FEMA and be approved. All, all the residents in the area are notified of that change and then the maps are updated with the new model to, to keep us current. So this gets into the Administration 933 and that talks about the minimum requirements.
Hey, Matt?
Yeah.
Hey, um, it's Jason.
Yes.
So two things real quick. Number one, I, I've got to compliment you on this section because, I mean, normally I can pick out some details, but this, this section is really well done. Just a quick question on, on the flood insurance study for Union County. It has here October 16, 2008 and this, sorry to nitpick, but I, I, I thought maybe the one I saw was 2009.
Okay. I've not seen any of our firms and that's the flood insurance rate map. That's kind of the, the basis for, for all our, our graphical representations. I've not seen any that were 2009. 2008 is, is, is the standard from the last major update. You know, it's interesting, I think in 2017, 2018, we attended a, a conference from the state and they rolled out a, a digital system, the, the flood insurance, the flood rate insurance system is, is now gone online. And what they were telling us at that time was that they were going to take all the LoMars. Typically, when you do a LoMar, which is a letter of map provision, it changes
Yeah.
those, those 2008 maps. Those new changes don't get included in the new mapping until a whole new model is done and new maps are generated. And what they said at the time was now that they've gone online and done all this modeling is all real time, they can do those LoMars and update the map digitally faster than they can in a paper. And then they said those were going to be as legally binding on the digital format as the paper. And they started doing that and then they had to walk it back because they, I guess, either they ran out of money or they, it turned out to be more work than they had anticipated because some of our LoMars are on the digital system and so they're accurate to 2016. But some of them are still, even though they've been approved, they have not made it to the new digital model and that's something that is, is, is kind of disappointing because we don't have as accurate when we're trying, when I'm trying to deal with a developer or property owners, I have to then refer back to these 2008 maps or go through the LoMars and the LoMars are very, they talk about bearings and distances and it's very hard i- if you can't show graphically, it gets very complicated to try and explain to someone where the floodplain is or isn't when the, when the LoMar is approved. But to, to your point, typically if, if the, the maps are 2008 and then I have to keep track of where LoMars are throughout town. And so I'll make a note on those maps, hey, this area has been superseded by a LoMar. And so then I have to refer the LoMar for any areas of, of development that, that want to get permitted there. So that might be, you might have seen a LoMar and that might be from 2009 typically, excuse me, the firms. All that I have are, are 2008 and, and hopefully we'll see those get replaced and updated sooner rather than later, but certainly with, with the amount of, of reoccurring flooding we're having in the state and really nationwide, FEMA is really under the gun, just keeping up with, with disaster relief and response, much less getting proactive on, on the program itself. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And so it's, yeah, it sounds to me like it, it's, it's not as relevant, the, the date that the study was referenced. So I, I think that's.
Right. And that's the thing. I don't typically, I don't even use the paper map. I'll go right to the, to the website and I'll show that to you later on because it's so up to date and so interactive. It's, it's such a great tool, but I do have to check my paper map to ensure that if a LoMar has been done, the, the digital system won't necessarily be as up to date as I would like. So we get into the application requirements and, and they talk about, you see the, the term BFE here referenced. That's the base flood elevation. As I've referred to previously, the hundred year flood or the 1% annual chance storm is the kind of the gold standard for flood protection. It, it was established when the program was initiated back in the sixties as the the, the, the defined point at which a threshold is crossed that we would want to control development. And so the base flood elevation is, is basically that height above sea level that we can expect the water level to rise to in that hundred year storm or 1% annual chance. And I'll, I'll say, you know, we talk about a hundred year storm and generally it's, it's a storm that has a, a chance of occurring once every hundred years. That's the 1%. That's how it's defined. But what we're finding now with, 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 with climate change is that hundred year storm, the frequency and the intensity of, of rainfall is occurring in a much more much more often than, than historical records have, have shown in, in the past 10, 15 years. We've had a hundred year storms several times in the same year. And, and so we know we've kind of got to rethink exactly how we're, we're doing that calculation and, and making those determinations because the, the, that terminology is, is, is already out of date when we think about it. Fortunately, even in those, these frequent occurrences, we are not seeing a lot of damage. We're seeing our low line crossings like Waxaw Marvin Road Bridge get, get overtopped and they are in the hundred year floodplain. So that's, that's kind of in, expected. But we're not seeing a lot of damage and certainly not loss of life from this level of occurrence. And, and that's because we are not overbuilt and, and we've been, been sticking to the letter of the program and, and even as I get a little bit deeper, we're, we're exceeding the minimum standards of, of the program. And I'll, I'll show that here in a little bit. So this talks about, you know, just typical model ordinance things in terms of how you would meet or, or get approved for your permits. So this talks about what, what has to be included on the plan. And if you, a, a, again, are anytime, so the definition of needing a floodplain development permit is if, if the floodplain crosses your property at any point, we require the zoning permit that, that is the higher level floodplain development permit. It doesn't matter if you're not proposing to build your house or any structure in the floodplain. It's just, does it cross your property? Because that way, that's the only way I can ensure when I review it that they are meeting the, the terms of the, of the base flood elevation because it is elevation. It's not necessarily on the horizontal. It's on the vertical that, that this comes into play. And so when we talk about certification requirements, that's the elevation certificate is what would be required if you're proposing to build a, a structure. You have to show through a professional surveyor that your structure is, is above the base flood elevation. And so it wouldn't be expected to be touched by water in that hundred year or 1% annual chance storm event. And, and so the base flood is, is the, the bare minimum, that's the water surface level. When we talk about our actual requirements, we require you to build above that because you want to factor a safety, right? You don't want the water coming right to your foundation and then stopping. You'd like to have a little bit of, of what we call freeboard, which is a space between the water and, and any structural members. Certainly you don't want any, any dwelling to be surrounded by water. And so the town in its last update to this, to this ordinance, the, the, the minimum standard of care is a one foot freeboard above the base flood elevation. A few years ago, we changed that to two feet just to add another factor of safety. And this is specifically to residential development. If, if, if somebody, and when we're talking about life safety, we want to have a higher standard and, and we do. And so we've gone to two feet above the base flood elevation. And so this elevation certificate is something that the surveyor and the builder have to certify that says, we know what the base flood elevation is and we're going to build at least two feet above it. And then I look at that and, and on the front end say, okay, you, you've got that elevation, say it's 620 feet and your, your foundation is sit at 622. That's, that's approved. Then they build the structure, they go back and recertify, they survey it again and say, look, we promised we were going to do it and we did do it. Then I go out, I verify that in the field before that certificate of, of occupancy can be issued before anybody can get into that dwelling. We have to ensure that it was built as they proposed it. Now, when we talk about commercial properties, you can, you can simply floodproof those because if no one's going to be living there, you don't need that higher standard of care in terms of, of public safety. Then you just talk about property damage. And so sometimes development on a commercial site, it might be maybe cost effective to not raise up the, the site two feet. We require you to raise it up one foot or floodproof it. If you can show that your structure can take the water in and then the water recedes and, and, and you've not created any damage, then you're basically doing the same thing. Very rarely does anybody bother to floodproof because it's just easier to build it a little bit higher than it is to take all the measures to floodproof. But that is allowed within the ordinance.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry to interrupt. Would, would you all like to take a break at this time?
Matt, you had a breakpoint?
I mean, I can be, I'll be, I'll be done with this ordinance. I think there's maybe two or three main points I'd be making afterwards. So it's, it's at your discretion.
How much time, how much time do you need if we go to a break and come back?
Probably 10, 15 minutes max.
Why don't we take a break and break here and then we'll dive into it. Give us about, give us about 10 minutes.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody? Very good. We'll take a 10 minute break here. Thanks. Okay, it's about twelve minutes after. We'll wait for the others to, uh, turn their cameras back on. Me included. Jeff, we can start anytime, uh. Matt and, uh, Jason come back on.
All right, great. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, looks like we, we've got everybody correct. So we will lift off, um. This section. Talks about the actual duties and responsibilities of the flood planning administrator. Again, outside of reviewing the permits. Um, and, and ensuring the elevations are, are accurate. We also make any interpretations that might be needed. Um, all our base flood elevation data is provided, so we don't have to, to do any other, um. Calculations. I think one of the, some of the biggest things. We are responsible as the, the, uh, information repository. For all the records and, and we have to maintain these in perpetuity. So, um. At any given time, if FEMA were to come in, I've got to be able to show them where our maps are. And, and where all our permits are. And, and all the approved LoMars, uh, everything top to bottom. Again, observing the sites, uh, stop work orders, I can revoke permits if, uh, if they're not meeting the minimum requirements. Inspections, corrective actions, et cetera. Now, it does provide for variance from the, uh, ordinance, and this is. A very, very, very rare occasion because under no circumstances would we really want to vary. So you've got to show, uh, some, some really incredible hardship. Uh, where some extenuating circumstances why we would. Approve a variance when we're talking about something is, is dangerous is. As, as floodwaters and, and, uh, and the damage that can occur here. So it's in there, but it's, 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 it's really. Um. Not advised to try and seek variance. So here are the nine, three, four, the, the, the general standards. And, and again, this, this first item, it really kind of gets to the intent. You should either be able to, to not float downstream and cause problems, fall down because of water or, or move because of water. Uh, I think that's the, the simplified kind of layman's terms of, of, of really what we're trying to get at here. And so when we talk about. What's involved, we're talking like item four. That includes your, your mechanical systems. Uh, if you have basements, that's another, um, item that really has to be properly cared for, uh, when we consider flooding. Sewer systems, uh, certainly we don't want water to be able to get in there. That, that's a, that's an environmental health hazard in and of itself. They also speak to substantial, um, improvements. Because if somebody is doing a remodel and it's over fifty percent of the structure, we want to make sure that they're doing that work. Uh, in accordance with the latest standards and not. Building in a problem just because they're not building a new structure, but, but if they're substantially changing an existing one. Then we get to the specific standards and those are really the, the, the details of where we talk about. Um, meeting our requirements. Where residential structure right here, the freeboard should be two feet. Non-residential, one foot. I think that's the, the, the crux of, of the detail here. Uh, manufactured homes are, are kind of a, a separate item. They are, have a different definition. And they, uh, it's just, just says that, hey, there are still rules that apply to them. Here's talking about elevating buildings typically, um. This is mostly done in the coastal areas. Uh, where kind of extreme conditions would certainly apply. But there is a means to do that if you wanted to do it here, uh, probably not cost effective. This talks about if you have a cross place, space. Uh, you have to have. Stay, uh, engineered openings in that crawl space preventing, but they have to be able to operate. To, to allow water in and then out. Um, so water doesn't just get stuck. And then kind of there's just a, a whole laundry list of, of other details. Uh, along with, with development in that, that we, I would have to check. Um, and, and typically, all I do, once I make sure that it's, it's two feet above, most of these things just end up not applying. There is even a section on, on RVs, um, if you're going to put, park them in a flood plain, you need a permit. And that permit needs to say that you're not going to keep them there too long. So we don't have to continually, um, worry about them because. Basically, when, uh. When you get that flash flood warning, that's when we have to start thinking about, oh, what, what have we permitted in? In the flood zones and, and, and we have to make sure that these, uh, if you're an RV, you're moving that thing to higher ground. Before, uh, before that event occurs. Think we've, we've done flood permits for, uh, portable, portable, uh, Johns in our, in our park system. And so that's, that's something that maybe nobody's thinking about, but. They have to get a permit and we have to plan for Billy to go out there and move those things to high ground if, if we're calling for a flood and they're in place. Again, accessory structures, a, a lower, the standard of care when we're talking about a shed, but nonetheless. Um, we prefer you not put it in there, but if that's the only place it's going to go, it has to meet those standards. Tanks as well. They, they, they float easier than you might think, even though they look big and heavy. As soon as water surrounds them, they become buoyant. And, uh, and so that's of, of specific concern. Uh, C doesn't apply to us. D, uh, okay, we do have. Yeah, that doesn't apply because we, we've all established those. So here's E is the floodway and non-encroachment areas. Those are the, the deepest part of the, of, of water. And, and we typically, you got to go to FEMA to get permission to do anything there. And so that's the ordinance in itself, um, from, from top to bottom. I think I do want to. Uh, show you the website. Quickly because it's a, it's a pretty neat tool. And I want to, uh. Let everybody kind of see what's available. Uh, at our disposal just by going online. So this is, um. Friz dot N C dot gov is the website. And you can go in when you, when you log right in, it's, it's going to ask you what state are you in? You'll click North Carolina, then it can, you can put in an address or you can just put in two eight one seven three. And it's going to zone you in right on Waxaw. And so here's an area of town. Again, the floodway is, is in blue. And then outside the floodway is a lighter color in, in lighter blue that is the flood plain. And I'm zoomed in on this area of Twelve Mile Creek because you can see these red, um, outlines. These are areas where a LoMar was done and updated to the system. And so you can tell right away, this is, this is up to date and accurate. Uh, other areas where maybe a LoMar is done, but it's not. Indicated on this map, that's where I'd have to go to the paper Mac. And confirm I have, this is the most up to date, or I have to refer to that LoMar on paper. But if we, if we zoom in. To an area. Then you can kind of get the feel for how powerful this is. This is showing the subdivision under construction. I think this is Lawson. Um, let's be sure. Yeah, so this is Lawson. And so here's a part of these phases. It's already built. But, um, their, their, their base mapping isn't, isn't as up to date, but these are kind of circumstances we can see. Someone can come in with a permit to build a house. And if it's out in the country, I don't really have a great way. To show, uh, where the flood plain is in relation to that property. But if, if they've got a, a survey for, for the permit, you've got to have a survey. So I'll look at that survey. I can get the coordinates off it. I can put the coordinates into the. Into the system and it'll drop a pin. And that pin, when I put it on there. It automatically tells me, I go over here to my flood information and it says, okay, you're in an A zone, which is the flood plain. This is your base flood elevation, five hundred and twenty-eight point nine feet. And so we already know when we talk about an elevation certificate. Any dwelling you want to build has to be built at five hundred and thirty point nine feet. In order to be approved for the permit. And that's just really powerful, uh, information to be able to have and use. Uh, these models are, are, I've found to be incredible, be accurate when we look at. Um, storms we've had recently, look at this map and see where the water. Levels rose in the creeks and, and they're, they're, they're pretty much, uh, spot on. And, and that's, that's reassuring to say the least. So. Here, this, the, this very central area where it's, it's white striped and blue, that's the, the flood way. That's a non-encroachment area. If, if, uh, you thought you were going to build in there. You're going to have to go through FEMA. It's going to cost you money. You're going to have to model it and, and, and it's going to take a lot of time. If you're in the blue areas, you see over here, it, it's red. It says danger. Don't, don't even try it. Again, you go out here into the blue. And, uh, you're in the A zone. We can permit that. You just got to meet your elevation. The yellow is the five hundred year flood. There are no regulations there. Uh, it's just more information to say if the flooding, if the storm event's a little bit more. From above a hundred up to five hundred years, this additional area can expect to be, uh, inundated with water. And so these, um, this information is, is, is really user friendly. And it's a lot easier, um, to talk kind of in layman's terms about what exposure property might have when we consider flood conditions. So that's, I think, the. The last of the piece that I have in chapter nine and then the, the website that helps support our flood protection ordinance. Uh, at this point, are there any questions? With this content?
No, this is great, Matt. I, I really appreciate you, uh, showing us this, uh, application too. It's really, it's really cool. I can see how you would get, uh. Distracted with this for quite some time.
Yeah, it's a, it, it, and again, when, when people call in and they say they have an issue or, um, they're worried about, do I need insurance or not? This is, they can pull this up on, on their home screen. I can pull it up and, and we could talk in real time. And, and it, it just speeds up the ability for anybody to understand and then know, you know, really, really where their risk is. Um, and when we talk about people wanting to buy, uh, this, this is super helpful to make sure that they're. They're really i- in the know, uh, something as important as, is, is my land going to be covered in water and, and should I, should I buy it?
All right. Thank you very much, Matt. Appreciate that. Uh, that is, it's really, uh, I, I think. Uh, we're, we're pleased that we're going to be consolidating those, uh. Those three ordinances into one chapter into our, uh, LDC. And putting all of our, all of our land use control ordinances in a one-stop shop. So. We're real excited about that. Now I'm going to share my screen and we're going to go through. Uh, chapter two here real quick. It is a very. Short. Chapter. And really all, all it is, is just describing the different, uh, administrative agencies that have. Uh, some type of role in review, uh, or enforcement or whatever it may be, uh, with this. With this code. So it, it talks about, uh, all of the, uh, the department, the staff, the, the primary people involved, the advisory boards. As well as the, uh, elected body. In this case, of course, our Board of Commissioners. So right off the top, you know, we establish, uh, uh, the planning, uh, department and, and I'll. I'll mention right off the top that you'll notice that that says planning and inspections instead of planning and development services. And so that's a little, uh. Preview into some of our retreat. Content where I've, I've looked into our organizational structure and that's, uh, one of the recommendations that I would make would be combining our planning and inspections into one. One department. And so that, that reflects, uh, here. And we'll be discussing that more in a couple of weeks, but moving along, of course, right off the top, we have our. Zoning administrator. That position is appointed by the town manager. And, you know, has a number of powers and duties under this code administering the provisions. Reviewing applications, conducting pre-application conferences, issuing permits, certificates of zoning, uh, uh, compliance. Approving minor subdivisions and collecting authorized fees. Of course, this is the main person that, that interprets the terms and, and provisions when a call needs to be made. Maintaining the official zoning map of all the public records, creating and maintaining all the forms, checklists, notices, uh, everything else that's needed to administer. The, uh, the, the code and then providing that information to decision-making bodies, the public, et cetera. Serving as, as the professional staff to advise. Serving as a professional staff to advise the decision-making and advisory boards, taking all action to ensure compliance, delegate assigned duties to qualified staff within the department as needed, and then waive any requirement where type or scale makes providing the information unnecessary or impractical. And lastly, to be able to adjust any requirement where the strict application of this code may be impractical or where a better performance of a requirement can be attained and keeping with the adopted plans and public safety and welfare. Next, we have the floodplain administrator. And this is not as exhaustive of a list as in the, as what you just heard Matt talk about in Chapter 9. But this is a laundry list, again, reiterating what the role of the floodplain administrator is. You're reviewing all applications, reviewing proposed development, encroachments. He talked about encroachments, areas preventing encroachment into the floodways, obtaining elevations, floodproofing, all that good stuff that we just talked about. Then we have the Chief Building Inspector and their role in coordinating plan review, assisting the zoning administrator on interpretation of code provisions. Of course, enforcing the five trade areas, enforcing or ensuring maintenance records for inspections, permits, plans and other related documents, working in concert with the planning and zoning folks, working with staff on zoning compliance on development sites as well. Public Services Director, they have a role in the code, too. And of course, that is assisting the zoning administrator with administering and interpretation of the code provisions, serving as professional staff and advisory to a decision-making and advisory boards, working closely with code enforcement to assist with this code, working with planning staff and review of plans and permits. And then probably where you see their involvement more than anything is their involvement on inspection and acceptance of infrastructure. When you see that on your consent agenda, a lot of time for acceptance of road and all of its infrastructure. That's at the end of a process that Public Services has a lot of direct involvement in, along with engineering. And then lastly, here we have our Town Engineer and their role, assisting the zoning administrator on interpretation and administration of code provisions, serving as professional staff, performing civil engineering duties as required and maintaining the close working relationship with regional, state and federal regulatory agencies. Since we do have a lot of that state model language that we have to enforce, as Matt went over. And then, of course, working with Planning and Public Services staff on inspection and acceptance of infrastructure. So then we have the Planning Board. They serve as an advisory function to assist decision-making, assist in making decisions pertaining to this code. And they operate in this capacity based on their rules and procedures adopted by the Board of Commissioners. And they advise the Board of Commissioners on decisions that involve zoning and map amendments, zoning text and zoning map amendments, conditional zoning districts, special use permits and major subdivisions. The Planning Board would also provide the Board of Commissioners with advice and recommendations on plans and policies developed by the town pertaining to planning, zoning, subdivision and environmental issues. But then we have the Board of Commissioners. Board of Commissioners have the final decision-making power on all policies and processes, except where this authority may be delegated to an advisory board or administration. And the Board of Commissioners shall consider recommendations from the Planning Board pertaining on decisions to zoning text amendments, zoning map amendments, conditional zoning districts, special use permits and major subdivisions. And the Board of Commissioners, yes?
I had a question in the notes here that I was reading where it runs up, where it says right under Board of Commissioners, where this authority is delegated to an advisory board. And I made a note to myself, do you have an example?
Yes, I do. So the primary example that we have is the Historic Preservation Commission and what they can do statutorily. So the Planning Board wouldn't really have any delegated powers. And there's no other advisory board that I'm familiar with that would have that delegated power. But one example would be like with the Historic Preservation Commission and their ability by state law to designate the historic landmarks. So that's what that means.
Hey, Jeff?
Yes?
Just a quick question back to page 15. Where we have major subdivisions, has that been defined somewhere else? How are we defining a major subdivision?
Yes, major subdivision is defined in Chapter 5 of the code. That is our subdivision section. And so you have a handful of different types of subdivisions. You have what are called major subdivisions, minor subdivisions and then exempt subdivisions. So for us, major subdivisions would pretty much be any development that would require right-of-way dedication and anything that would be above nine, it's either nine or 10. I don't remember off the top of my head, nine or 10 lots. So a minor subdivision would be nine lots or less with no public right-of-way dedication. And major would pretty much be everything else. And you know, if I had to estimate, probably 75% of all subdivisions are major subdivisions and require board approval. There are a good number of minor subdivisions that happen where, say, a property owner has a large piece of property and they may want to subdivide a piece out for their grandkid to build a house, something like that, that doesn't require public right-of-way dedication. That's a typical minor subdivision that we might see. Or if somebody wants to sell a portion of their property to their neighbor and that line gets adjusted, that's another example of a minor subdivision. Major subdivisions are going to be pretty much all of your major developments.
Thanks, Jeff. I see it now in Chapter 5.
You're welcome. So in the Board of Adjustment, talk about their powers to hear and decide appeals where there's alleged error in any final order, requirements, decisions or determinations made by the administrative official in the enforcement of the code. So you know what that means? Say we send a violation letter to a property owner for something and they want to appeal that, then the Board of Adjustment would hear that particular case. More often, they would have a case that would involve a variance, which is what paragraph B is. And that's to hear and determine variances which relate to the establishment or extension of structures or uses of land. So you know, that, if somebody has, as we talked about a little bit in Chapter 3, if they want to put up an accessory building and for some reason, they can't meet the side setback requirements and they would want to seek a variance out, that process would be sought through the Board of Adjustment, who would make that final decision. And then any matters, appeals, they go to Superior Court is where a decision of a Board of Adjustment can be contested by any owner if they are not satisfied with that decision. So then we have the Historic Preservation Commission and they serve in as an advisory function to assist in decision-making, decisions pertaining to this code. And the HPC should operate in this capacity based upon their rules and procedure that's adopted by the Board of Commissioners. And in addition to the advisory role, HPC shall have powers and duties as described in the following section. And so this section is taken directly from 160D-942. And so that's just following that language as we discussed in Chapter 12. And then, of course, we'll dive back more into Chapter 12 at the retreat when we review everything about the processes there, yes?
Should I hold off on some of the questions since this is also in Section 12?
Yeah, so this would just be the powers and duties. All of the process stuff is in Chapter 12. And we have revamped that based on board feedback. And so we'll have that for you at the retreat.
Well, because like one of the questions that I had here in Item C, where it says acquire. Acquire from, you know, how would they acquire the properties? Where would they get the money to do any of that? I mean, are they going to have their own fundraisers to raise funds to be able to acquire that? Or?
Well, they wouldn't get any money for it if the Board of Commissioners wouldn't authorize it. So I mean, it's a power, in my mind, I mean, it's a power and duty, but it's not necessarily a power and duty they can utilize without a means to do so.
And then also goes back to the Section D where it says operate. Like if they wanted to operate, let's say, one of the buildings, like where would they get the operating funds to do that? Again, would that be appropriated through the board?
That would be appropriated through the board, but that would only be at the board's discretion.
Jeff, I have one more thing to note. Earlier, it had said something about the HPC adopting or the Board of Commissioners adopting the HPC rules of procedure. Actually, HPC adopts their own rules of procedure, given that they are a statutory board. So any of the statutory boards, such as Board of Adjustment, HPC and Planning Board, all adopt their own rules or procedure.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Melody.
ABC Board as well?
Yes.
Well, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
We'll make that adjustment.
Quick question, just to clarify in that, too. Is there any language on the statutory, on the requirements of how many members make up each one of those boards?
There is some statutory requirements related to some of these boards and then others don't. It's a little bit more flexible. So I could send out that information to the board members so that you have that on hand.
Well, I know originally in this first version that we have here, it talks about the historic preservation consisting of seven members. But I think the statutory requirements is no less than three. So I don't know if we need to include that language in here, if it's statutory?
I wouldn't include it in here mainly because it would be setting it in a ordinance and you don't want to do that. You would want to do that through the rules or procedure. That would give you more flexibility in defining how many members are on the advisory boards.
Okay, so you're saying rather than put it in an ordinance, which is sort of town law, it's better to do it in a rules of procedure where it can be somewhat changed, I guess?
Yeah, and that is the one thing that the Board of Commissioners can have say over is how many members are on each of the advisor boards, as long as it is fitting that statutory requirement.
Great, thanks.
And that's why we took that language out at the beginning of each of those on the number because we thought that was, as Melody said, better served for another document and not this document where we just stick with the basics that we need to cover through the code. So lastly, we have the Technical Review Committee. And this, pretty much, the first paragraph there is verbatim from what your first version was. I'd gotten the comment, though, ahead of time to add in some examples of what these organizations are. So as I've mentioned before, when we get plans in and they get distributed to the Technical Review Committee, we listed some of the organizations, but they're definitely not limited to. But the main ones are North Carolina NC DOT, Duke Energy, Union Power, Piedmont Natural Gas, Waxaw Volunteer Fire Department and probably half of the email chain that we send it out to is associated with Union County in some way, shape or form, whether they're in the Planning Department, the Public Works Department, Public Health or Union County Schools. And so we wanted to, as requested, give an example of the different organizations that are part of our technical review so that if somebody looked at the code and they wanted to know who they might be and wanted to get an idea of who we're sending these to, they'd be able to get that here from Chapter 2. And then that's that, very short and sweet. So what that does is that gets us through every chapter, with the exception of definitions, which is Chapter 13. So I wasn't anticipating that everybody would be really keen in going through the definition section. But if somebody wants to do that, we can do that. Otherwise, I might suggest that that just be a section that you review over the next couple of weeks. And if you have any specific question about a topic or a term or if you feel like we're missing some term or something needs to be clarified or whatever that is, we're certainly happy to discuss that. So where we would be at now, what we do after each of these meetings and beforehand, you know, we do a run-through, we try to catch things beforehand, which is why sometimes you see a little bit different in the text that we're producing to you versus what you see. But then also, on the back end of every one of these meetings, we've gone through all of the comments. We've made all of the updates and adjustments. And what we are planning to do at the retreat is provide you the laundry list of all of the adjustments we've made based on board feedback. And Blair in Madison will be leading that charge at the retreat and going over all of those changes. Now, we're not going to go over all the grammar and spelling and spaces and all that kind of stuff, but we will go through the content with the board and that will be a part of your packet. So you'll get to see that ahead of time, ahead of the retreat. So you can be reading that to get yourself familiar with it. And so we'll go through that and then we will see at what comfort level the board is. With moving forward from that, we plan on doing at this upcoming Planning Board meeting, which is also the same week as the retreat, just earlier in the week, I'll do my first big overview of the code after the point where we've gotten through all of the Board of Commissioner reviews. So we'll do that big overview there. And then probably soon thereafter, be seeking the Planning Board's recommendation on the LDC. And depending on the Board of Commissioners' comfort level from the retreat, then moving forward in that fashion to try to keep with the same schedule as we've talked about is to have this cross the finish line this winter 2021. So I want to, I guess, first, congratulations. You've made it through all of these reviews and have provided really some outstanding feedback. As I mentioned to you before, I have peers that think that we are nuts. But you know what? I think this has been very productive. And you've read through the code, you've had questions. We've made a lot of adjustments. And so you guys, as a group, I think, are one of the few in North Carolina that have thoroughly gone through a code like this. So congratulations on that. I think that's something that we can be very proud of. All of these processes are very long. You know, we are over a year and a half into this process, as they all are. So I'm looking forward to inching closer to the finish line. We have an awesome staff here that has been very collaborative with this process. And I, again, just want to express my gratitude to the board about how supportive you've been. about how supportive you've been in this process to get us to this point. And we all can be very proud of that. Thank you very much.
I believe that Brenda had a comment.
I just had a quick question. I just want to make sure I understood that you said that we will get the information before the retreat so that we have the opportunity to look it over once we're, you know, we're there. And if we have any additional questions, we can do it then.
That's correct. You'll have a list of all of the adjustments and the changes. There'll be a laundry list of them and you'll still have a new code. We'll provide you with a new binder and a fresh copy based on all of those, all of the rewritten content. So you'll have a full new LDC. And then you'll have a cheat sheet there along with it that shows what those adjustments were.
Everyone, this has been precedent-setting for sure. And as Jeff has stated, he's told the story and I have as well to others around us in these surrounding communities. And they think that we're crazy for going through all this stuff. But I think it's been really beneficial for all of us to really get literally a line item by line item understanding of how our town works and what codes are in place. So we can then better plan, better act and better serve our constituents. So I'll give out gold stars to everybody at the retreat who went through this process. We'll stick them on our foreheads. But Jeff and your team, you've done a great job packaging all of this, answering all of our crazy questions at times. It's been really helpful. And I think we're going to be probably one of the most informed boards in the county.
So with that.
I would say especially if you read chapter 13 of our code, which I want to recommend because it's not as dry as you think and it would provide you a way to skim through different subject matter and maybe something will jump out at you as, and you're not sure, hey, I don't remember that in the LDC or what does the LDC have to say about that? So I do want to recommend it. But I also want to let you know that the list of significant changes, it works out to be about one slide per chapter or some, a couple of chapters have two slides on a PowerPoint of all the changes. So I think it'll be manageable.
Well, again, we'll all have the takeaway of having not only this notebook that we've been working from, but also the final version of this. And it'll sit on my shelf to, you know, refer to all the time. Can't remember all of it. And I think it's going to be just great to have that resource available for everybody.
And we have a great story to tell here. Blair and I were talking about this and I'll just, you know, talk about this little side note here is that this really screams to be a topic at one of our annual planning conferences. I mean, we would submit an abstract for this and this would get taken as an item in a heartbeat that we could go over, you know, how we've worked through this, written in-house, had the support of the board moving through. And this is how you can do it in your community. So, you know, it really screams for that kind of of conference participation. So I think we might be doing that at some point whenever whenever we're able to actually attend a conference again.
Well, I think it'd be a great thing to, we'll be the poster child for one thing or another. That's for sure.
That's right.
All right. It is just about eight minutes until the hour of six o'clock. And again, team, thank you very much for allowing us the time to be along with you on this ride, to understand this better. Thanks again for all the town staff and certainly town manager for answering again all of our questions. This has been a great session. I'm looking forward to getting the revised portion of this stuff and then having some additional dialogue at the retreat. So unless there's any further questions, comments from anybody else up here on the screen, I'm going to then, seeing none, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. So we're done. We'll see some of you back on at 6:30.